Call the meeting of Monday, August 9th to order. If the clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Archibald?
Here.
Councilmember Fisher?
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Here.
Councilmember Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Moller?
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Here.
Mayor Rep? Here. You have before you the minutes from the regular meeting of July the 26th. Do we have a motion to receive and file those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Moller. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Archibald, is there any deletions, additions, changes? With that, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Signify by saying nay. The minutes will be received and filed as submitted. We have public hearings tonight, two of them, but they'll all both be at the same time. If the clerk would please read it.
One and two are to hear comments on the application of IAC Port Huron LLC located at 1905 Beard Street for a new industrial facilities exemption certificate for facility expansion, which is machinery, equipment, furniture, and fixtures, and on their application for a second three-year extension of their industrial facility exemption certificate, number 2003-215. Following the public hearings and public comment, council will consider two resolutions, the first one being to approve the application for the industrial facility exemption certificate for six years on personal property, and the second will be a resolution for to extend for a second three-year period the industrial facility exemption certificate number 2003-215.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the council on these two public hearings?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager. I would just like to ask you a question here tonight, if you guys would, before we get done with this here. The fact is, one of the corporations in the city of Port Huron, which was recently granted a tax abatement for a period of time, appears to be closing. I think it behooves you to address the city of Port Huron and its residents of what happens to these companies when they leave early and they've got these taxes exemptions. I think it's critical they know this, and I've come to an understanding of what happens, but I think it'd be nice if the voters also knew it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, could we have somebody maybe address that?
Just... It has come up several times, so perhaps we should.
Mayor Rep, council persons, I'm here to address the IAC tax payment on the agenda tonight, and we have two representatives from the company also with us to answer questions. We have Kerry Bruce from the Dearborn headquarters, and Brad Deefenbach from the Port Huron office, controller there. This is an interesting return to a tax abatement extension that was on the agenda in September last year. At that time, we did a transfer from what was originally granted to the Lear Corporation to IAC, and we indicated to them at the time they had requested a six-year extension that we were only in a position to grant the three years because there were no additional jobs being created, and we encouraged them to come back if and when that were the case, and I'm happy to say that's really what we're seeing tonight, is 65 new jobs being created in the transfer of work from out of the state of Michigan into the Port Huron facility. So it's a good news story, and I'm sure the gentlemen who are here could answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Does anyone on council have any questions? Hi? Did you?
I don't have a question about that per se, but I would still like to get the answer to Ken's question, and what does happen, and make sure the public knows what happens with an exemption, once it's granted, should a company close?
I don't know if this... Yeah, do you want to...
Good evening. And most of these exemptions are granted pursuant to a contract, and the contract would spell out what happens under those circumstances. The two that you have before you tonight, were there to be a closure, the exemption would end at that point. It would not go back in time and recover any tax break that had been given in the past. It is possible to draft such an agreement, but if they're at the stage of closing, you know, then obviously you may have difficulty recovering. And also, I should also say that, you know, most companies, you know, the agreements that we have before us are pretty standard, and most companies don't go beyond that when they agree to these. It is possible to ask them to go beyond that or make that a condition.
And I do believe that most of our agreements we have all have that clause in there, that they can be revoked. Do they... Yeah. Is there anyone else who'd like to address public hearings, one and two?
Anthony America, Port Huron. There should be no tax breaks, except for the people of Port Huron. Do not give city money away. If you have to continue this odious practice, I sure could use some money from the city.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address public hearings, number one and two?
Good evening, Mayor, Mr. Brown, city council. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the company on growth and bring in work in the area. However, I'd like to make a point to city council that we need to make sure that they're going to hire local people. With a 20 percent unemployment rate in the city of Port Huron, it's time to bring people that live in the city, that pay taxes in the city, that spend their money in the city, let's put those folks back to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council on public hearings, number one and two? Seeing no one, public hearings are closed, and we have before us, and we can take them both together. If you so desire, public hearing number one and two, the resolutions that would approve the applications, and I need a motion.
Move for the adoption of PH1 and 2 on the agenda.
Thank you, councilmember Fisher. Is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Miller, is there any further discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, councilmember Moller.
I just want to make sure I was understanding what the lawyer, Mr. Shawty, said. Basically, if we grant this, the money is lost to the city. If the facility closes, we can't retroactively go back and get the money.
Under the terms of the agreement attached, that's correct. One of the... The one thing I should also say is, the agreement does require that they maintain, that they create and maintain the 65 new jobs to continue to get the exemption. So if that doesn't happen, then we have the power to revoke the exemption.
If they don't maintain the 65 positions?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? We'll take the vote.
Mayor Rep.
Oh, sorry.
With that caveat, I will be supporting it, but without that, I would not have supported this because I believe that... I voted against water and sewer rates, as everyone knows, and I feel nothing against the company, but I just feel that if we're going to be raising taxes for the residents of this community, we shouldn't be raising, giving businesses tax abatements. However, because of the 65 jobs that are tied to this, I will support it because of our unemployment situation. Thank you, Mayor Rep.
You're welcome. We'll take the vote now.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We are... Before we have public audiences, Mr. Brown is going to give a brief overview of the rental ordinance that's being introduced tonight, so that anyone who speaks on it at least has that background.
Okay. When I came to this community about a year and a half ago, one of the things that I was warned about was the extremely high rental rate in the community. We were told by an urbanologist from Wayne State University that if the rental rates exceed 25 to 30 percent, and the poverty rate exceeds 20 percent, a community is in a position where it is unsustainable as an urban community, and we've seen this happen in Benton Harbor, for instance, and we are certainly witnessing it south of our borders in the city of Detroit. We currently have 14,000 housing units in our community. Forty-three percent of those are rental units, and those are what we call certified rental units. Those are rental units that we know about. We believe there's another 15 to 20 percent of people that are renting units that are not certified, so we are approaching somewhere in the neighborhood of 55 to 60 percent of our housing units that are being rented. We understand that there is a question of property rights that always emerges in these kind of discussions. It's my property, I've got a right to do whatever I want to with it, and the city needs to keep their nose out of my business. I would suggest that there are other property rights that are also impacted by this situation. I probably have five or six calls to my office a week with people that are living in a rental unit next to a rental unit situation, and are experiencing all kinds of issues that they should not have to experience. I'm also getting calls from people who have made an investment by purchasing a home in this community, and have decided that for they and their family, this is where their largest investment is going to be. And as a result of the rental units that are happening in this community, we are finding a steady stream of people who are saying, "I'm getting out of here before I lose the value of my home." I asked our staff to give me a map about a month ago, and that's the most... It's the most shocking map I've ever seen. These are where the rental units are located, in the city of Port Huron, and virtually every neighborhood is experiencing this kind of an impact in the city of Port Huron. And I would suggest to you that we need to get our arms around that. It's a situation that is going to continue to get worse. We have got to, I believe, my recommendation to the city council, is that we need to step back and have some breathing room, and try to understand what impact this situation is having and will have if it's continued unchecked on this community. And with that in mind, I recommended to the city council a one-year moratorium on certified rental units. Those that are already certified and are operating legally will not be impacted by this ordinance. Those that are not certified and are operating illegally will be impacted by this ordinance unless between now and the 1st of September, we hear from them, and we're able to indicate where they are and what their situation is. We will not be issuing, if this is approved by the city council, any new certifications for a year. During that time, we want to take a look at this whole rental situation and try to understand its impact. We want to look at such things, for instance, as police calls, fire calls, number of blight calls that are related to these properties, the incidence of Section 8 housing in the community, social factors that are related to these units, the age of the rentals, the condition of the rentals, et cetera, et cetera, and then come back to the city council with a recommendation. Our goal, my goal, would be to reduce the number of rental units by 15 or 20 percent within the next 10 years, hopefully get to the 30 percent mark, if we could do that over a period of 10 years. It doesn't seem to me to be an unrealistic or a difficult thing to do if we understand the impact that this is having on our neighborhoods and on the people who are making investments in this community, and that is why I recommended it. So that's what this ordinance is all about. Mr. Shawty's here, if you have any questions as it relates to the legality of the ordinance, but the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish is what I've just gone through.
Thank you. Also, before we start a public audience, as I see there's a number of persons in the audience that were here and expressed their concerns about the Blue Water Fest at the last council meeting. Mr. Brown has preliminarily put together something, but it's not ready for publication yet, in the sense that the financials are not all in. He says, tells me that it should be ready by the next council meeting, at which time we will share it with you, and then there'll be an opportunity for communication, so I just wanted you to know that upfront. And at this time, then, it's public audience. Anyone who wishes to speak to the council can come forward, give us your name and address, and you're limited to four minutes. And so the line begins.
Good evening, Mayor Rep, city council, and Mr. Brown. My name is John Roach, owner of the Roach Bar in Port Huron. I am here before you this evening representing myself, the business owners, the charities, and the taxpayers you see behind me. We would like to start by commending the city for its efforts in expanding the festival. We enjoyed the extra day of festivities and the lighted boat parade put on by the Power Squadron. However, we want to see some changes for next year that will have a positive economic impact on our community. We have a solution that we would like to share with you. In short, it would return the event to what it used to be back in its prime. If you recall, at one time, the Blue Water Festival was the premier event, probably anywhere in the state. It brought hundreds of thousands of tourists to our area, benefited nonprofit groups, businesses, and was truly a community event. We ask for a meeting where we can outline this plan for you. We offer ourselves as a sincerely committed group, including local business owners, citizens, and charities of the community, which would work hard to produce a top-notch event. We have been in contact with people who can and have produced such events, and would work alongside us to ensure that this is done well. We feel that this would take some of the financial responsibility and pressure off the city government that is strapped for money due to the massive sewer separation project. As you remember, at the last city council meeting, we presented to you the information we had learned concerning this Blue Water Festival. We return tonight to ask you where you are at in the process of addressing our questions, concerns, and suggestions. This is something we feel important, and we'd like to get the answers as soon as possible. At the last meeting, you said you'd get back to us in 30 days, which you just addressed at the next council meeting, and we look forward to hear from your findings. We would also like to discuss with you our idea of letting this community return our festival back to its former glory, a true community event. Thank you very much.
My name is Carl Schoenberg. I live at 3147 Mommy Trail in Clyde Township. Was born and raised in the city of Port Huron for 21 years, and lived in Fort Grashaw for 29, and now Clyde Township for 10 years, truly a Blue Water area resident. As a member of the Knights of Columbus 521, I would be proud to be part of any planning and execution of future Blue Water Fest activities with people like the group standing behind me. I'm here tonight to inform you of the following. A local Blue Water area business is very passionate about the loss of funds normally earned by nonprofit organizations or charities during the Blue Water Fest. Charities such as Woodland Developmental Center, Special Olympics, St. Vincent de Paul Food Bank, local Right to Life education, and many more suffer when the Port Huron Council 521 Knights of Columbus loses these funding-raising opportunities. Therefore, this business owner would like the KSC to be able to continue their support to local charities at a level they are accustomed to by giving us a check for $2,500. We thank this owner from the bottom of our hearts, and God bless you for thinking of us.
Hello, Madam Mayor and City Council, and Mr. Brown. My name is Diana Maxwell. I live in Kimball Township. I've been a realtor for 30-plus years. I was a landlord at one time, having 67 units in and outside the city of Port Huron. I no longer have rentals, but I do work with people that buy rentals. The reason I'm here, I'm here as a realtor, and as a real estate agent, when we become a realtor, we promise that we're going to protect people's private property rights, and part of that is their ability to rent out their property if they so choose. And for my present sellers and my future sellers, right now, it's difficult to sell some of these listings in Port Huron, as you know, and I think that we're looking at this from the wrong point of view, coming up with new rules, regulations, new things, when we already have a lot of rules, regulations on the books, that we just need to work. You know, we need to get out there with the blight and start enforcing a lot of these. The thing with the city, we have people moving out of the city, not because there's a higher number of rentals. We have people moving out of the city because the taxes are higher than the townships, 10 to 15 mils, there's a 1 percent city income tax, and the lots are bigger. They find that, they feel that maybe the quality of life is better in the townships, that maybe the schools are better. I think we're looking at this the wrong way. We need to improve the city of Port Huron and its services, and come up with reasons which are much more difficult than making more rules. We need to come up with reasons to pull people back into the city, to make the city a vibrant community, and I think we're starting to do that with things like the Rockin' on the River, and the festivals that we have, and the different things going on, instead of trying to come up with new regulations. And, Mr. Brown, everything that you mentioned, that you want to check with the police reports and all that, that can all be done without doing a moratorium on new rentals. That's just one step closer to saying, "No more rentals at all." And as a realtor, you know, I too want to see the city improve. I want to drive down the streets and be proud of what I'm selling, but when I was a landlord, and we had several tenants that half of our tenants were with us more than 10 to 15 years. They were not bad people. If I ask all of you, how many of you have ever rented a house, or your kids have rented a house, that's not the answer. We already have these people here. In fact, the city brought a lot of these people when they built the low-income housing developments. If you want to decrease the number of tenants, maybe we ought to look at taking, closing down some of those large complexes, you know? Tenants have rights, too. They also have their kids in school, which helps increase the number of children we have. They also pay water rates, and the landlords, they pay 18 mils on top of the regular taxes, so we're all contributing, and I think we're just looking at this the wrong way. I think it's much harder to look at it and say, "How can we, what can we do as an area to pull people back into our city?" Instead of looking at a punishment means of saying, "No more of this or that," and maybe focus the Quality of Life Commission on improving the quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carol Cataldo. I live at 606 Garfield Street in Port Huron, and I'm going to follow up on Diana's train of thought, that for 24 years, from 1980 to 2004, I was a landlord in the city of Port Huron, and also in Oakland County and Santa Lake County, and I also am a former realtor. And the thing is, what, in a town this age, Port Huron, many of our rental properties, our housing stock is older, and they sit on non-conforming lots, and these buildings, you want to maybe attract first-time homebuyers, they have, there's regulations, when you sell these houses, that the minimum square footage of the lot must be 5,000 square feet, which is essentially 50 by 100. A lot of our existing housing in the downtown area of Port Huron does not sit on a conforming lot, which means first-time homebuyers, when they're going through these special programs, do not qualify for that house. They will be kicked out of underwriting, so these have traditionally become rental properties. And, you know, the thing is, and it was really interesting that Mr. Brown, in today's paper, was saying that rental properties are not necessarily kept up to the standards of homeowner-occupied properties, and the thing is, who is the largest single landlord in the city of Port Huron is the city of Port Huron? And if you want a 20 percent decrease in the rental stock in the city of Port Huron, it really should start with the city of Port Huron. It's not fair to take away the income of existing property owners that we can't do what we pleased with our property when we are not necessarily the number-one owner of these rental stock. And I really think, when we look at this problem, that's got to be addressed. We have the problem with non-conforming lots, which makes it virtually impossible for anybody but an investor to come in and buy these properties, and, yes, there are bad neighborhoods, and a lot of our older neighborhoods, another thing, too, why people don't buy these homes, they are not built to existing building codes. We have a lot of older houses that are built 24-inch on center construction with 2-by-4 roof choices. People are not going to buy these houses and say, "Oh gee, I'm going to make this my home," if they have a property inspection done, and unfortunately, this is the reality of a lot of the older homes in the neighborhoods of Port Huron. And we really, before we do a moratorium, these are some of the issues, too, that need to be addressed, that, you know, we are an old town, and I really don't think this is the right way to go about it, and if you think the foreclosures have run their course, think again. Unemployment just now is running out for those that used to work in the industrial park, and we don't know what they're going to do, and I'm sure some of these people are city residents, and maybe they will need to rent their houses to look for work someplace else. I know that was an exception, but, you know, we really shouldn't tie our hands to the general public, and I'm... That's just my thoughts on this whole thing with the rentals.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Brown. My name is Althea Richards, and I live at 3993 North River Road, Fort Grashaw, Michigan. This is in regards to the one-year moratorium on rental certificates. We, my husband and I, disagree with the proposal because of the economic hardship it would or could put on some property owners specifically. We own 12 homes in the city that are rental units, 10 of which at one time were sold on a land contract, and because of the drastic downturn in the economy, the homes were returned to us because of default contract. The homes were unable to be resold because the value dropped to less than what we owed to the bank. Therefore, to recoup some loss, we turned them into rentals. Our concern now is that we have several other homes sold on land contracts in the city, and because of the continued economic situation, the owners, through no fault of their own, are struggling to make their payments. It will be totally on our shoulders if these homes become vacant and we're unable to resell them. We still have utility bills, mortgage bills, and property taxes to pay. We agree that reselling the houses would be better for all of us, but in the meantime, we'd like to turn them into rentals. We understand your concern about blight and neglect, but we have always taken utmost care of our properties. We're only asking that you reconsider the proposal to place a one-year moratorium on rental certificates at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Johnny Dog Muldown. I run a hot dog cart down to Blue Water Bridge. I've been living in the area for 13 years, and now I live in the city of Port Huron, and I am a registered voter. I just want to address this to the city manager, that letter you sent to me, or handed me, I thought I was in very poor taste. That letter you sent to me, or handed me, I thought it was in very poor taste, about calling my American flag illegal paraphernalia. I think you ought to be ashamed of yourself. I'm appalled at it, and I'm going to read my poem one more time. "I flew my flag high, now ask me why. The skies are blue and my fight is so true. I will lead them to the valley of freedom. I will not rest until my mission's complete. Every time they knock me down, I land on my feet. One man, one voice, and I want to be heard. Tell me your problems, and you'll be heard. A nation which forgets its defenders will itself be forgotten. Somewhere in Port Huron, something smells rotten. I'm just trying to make a living; these actions will not be forgiven. I look into a child's eyes, I see life. Dressed as Scooby-Doo, the parents are loving it too. The harassment must stop, because I'm steady as a rock, and I will never, never give up the fight, because I'm an American day and night." Thank you.
My name is David Castillo. I live at 171623rd in Port Huron. The reason why I'm here is because I'm very passionate about the proposal Mr. Brown has given the city of Port Huron. I'm thinking that, it's not sounding very good, people aren't very positive about it. Mr. Brown, I would suggest you maybe embrace another type of program that may bring, you know, prosperity to Port Huron. I am a real estate agent, been doing it for fourteen years. And I did a little bit of research in the real estate listings. In the city of Port Huron, there is between $2,000 and $40,000, fifty-five houses that are listed, okay? I checked to see how many are pending, seventeen of them. Earlier today, I ran into a Realtor that told me two of them are not going to go because of the cap on the rents. So, I'm thinking that the other fifteen might not be selling either. So, that means that you're not only going to be taking food out of all these Realtors' mouths, you're also looking at appraisers, you're looking at mortgage lenders, you're looking at, I mean, even over forty thousand, there's banks that aren't going to be getting these applicants now, and they're not going to be selling these houses over forty thousand dollars, and there's a lot of them. There's attorneys that aren't going to be writing up contracts. The list goes on and on. Inspectors, home repair people that take over these houses, Home Depot, loans, I mean, that's money that's going to be put back in the housing industry, in the economy. And I'll tell you what, Dan Haley didn't look like she was, you know, that was here before, that had twelve houses. Most of my investors, and that's where I make my bread and butter, is through investors. You know, if you're going to vote for this proposal, I'm going to vote against you next time you come up for election, because why should I feed you if you're not going to feed us? And again, you're going to get paid, no matter whether this goes around. Pick another program. I would embrace that much more. I'll tell you what, it's a good idea. I live on the south end of town. My family owns Sportsman's Bar. We're struggling. I worked there voluntarily, because we want to keep the business going, keeping the family making us mean. I drive back and forth under that tunnel, where unfortunately, there has been people that have been killed going underneath that. And then we took somebody to die for the Grant Trump to light that up. Why can't the city decide to make something passable, so that way people with wheelchairs, walkers, children, people getting pushed in baby carts, safe passage? I got scared, because I didn't see somebody under there one day. I thought, "I'm going to come down here and talk about this." But now that this rental cap is going on, I just don't know what I'm more passionate about, me getting money to pay taxes, which I'm doing, or the safety of people crossing from one side of the south end to the other side of the south end. Please, working on something like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Andrea Breeden, and I'm an associate broker with Sign GMAC. And my home is at 912 Thorn Apple in St. Clair. I'm facing a dilemma at the moment. If I'm understanding your new proposal correctly, as an agent, I am currently working with a couple of investors who are interested in purchasing property in the city of Port Huron. And in fact, we do have offers on the table right now. And if I'm understanding your ordinance correct, if we close these properties after September first, they will not be able to use the property as they originally intended, which is a very serious dilemma for the prospective purchaser. So, if this ordinance is to go into effect, I would like you to consider honoring any offers that have been written prior to September first, and allowing a sufficient time to close, with the understanding that a lot of property is in a short-sale situation, and short-sale transactions do take an exorbitant amount of time. So, I'm asking that that be considered as a part of your ordinance. I also recognize in the article that there are 20% of unregistered rental units. And I'd like to suggest that if that is in fact the case, you may have an issue of enforcement. And I think enforcement is going to be important to try to achieve the goals that you are attempting to achieve. And I do understand and appreciate the spirit of which this proposal has been made. I'd like to also make a point that you have a blight ordinance. And if people are concerned about their neighbors, and if they're concerned about the condition of their property, again, I would like to suggest that enforcement of the issues at hand would also eliminate a lot of the problems that you are currently facing. I'd like to point out that currently, when I pulled up some real estate statistics, you have an average selling price of single-family residential homes at $46,000 year-to-date. You've sold 168 of these properties. You also have ten properties classified as multifamily that have sold with an average selling price of $16,000. I can tell you that there is one lender locally who will not loan on a property that is under $40,000. So, you are now appealing to investors, and investors with cash, to purchase these properties. If you take an investor pool out of this market, you're only leaving a smaller pool of prospective purchasers, which would be owner-occupied people. For them to get financing is going to be difficult. You're also looking at improvement of the property, because the majority of these properties have had the copper plumbing, the kitchen sinks, and furnaces go out by the back door. So, they're not financeable as it is. Investors, on the other hand, are coming to the table with cash, they're making improvements, and they're putting these properties back into your market. And they are being improved. With one particular purchaser that I'm working with, she's intending to buy it, rent it for a couple of years, with the intent of being owner-occupied two years down the road. With the proposal that's on the table right now, she will not be able to do that.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Robert Green II. I reside at 3426 West Drive in Clyde Township. And I've had an audience with a few of you in the past. First of all, Manager Brown, you invited me in a year ago for an audience in your own office, and we discussed this issue, and I gave you some ideas back then, as to how about to go about and do some things in the city of Port Huron. Mr. Fisher, you and I have had conversations at length, and I got to say that this rental ordinance change is going to be very detrimental to the number of purchasers of homes that are sitting here, which are foreclosures, and have become rental units or refurbished units that eventually become single-family housing stock. I work with several large companies that dispose of foreclosures. City of Port Huron has the lowest sale price on most of these properties right now to date, for all the reasons that different ones have turned around and said, "We have a higher income tax rate, we have a higher property tax and so forth." It's more difficult to sell a home in the city of Port Huron than it is in any of the townships. These companies are taking substantial losses. And I got to say, as the lady before me said, these things are stripped, and they need to be refurbished and redone. Not all of those homes are going to go and be resold to homeowners, owner occupants. Which brings me to the point where I say that good or bad things happen to good people. I have met a number of people that have been displaced because of their jobs, because of other reasons, that they lost a home in our area and need to rent. You need to be aware that when these people that have gone through their financial straits, and there are many, many around us, if they've had a foreclosure, they're not going to get a mortgage for five to seven years. If they've done a short sale, they're not going to get a mortgage for three to five years. That came from the head of First Michigan of Troy at a Realtors' meeting we had. These people have to rent. These people will need to rent. And you're not going to diminish that number of people. Therefore, you will be taking away housing from people that need good, quality rentals in our city and in our townships. And if you want to push them to the townships, then they won't be taxpayers in the city of Port Huron on income tax. You know, Mr. Brown, I'm appalled. You told me you were a former Realtor, and as a Realtor, you stood up with ethics to say that you would uphold property rights and values for other people. By doing this, enacting this ordinance, you're going to depress the market further in its value. You're going to see people that take a home and have been maybe a family member's home and want to sell it and interject it, and if it is potential for a rental, they're going to get 20 or 30 or 40% less than our current values are now, because we have slapped their hands that the new buyer cannot turn around and rent it. It's going to create a declining value even further. And for property owners in general in the city of Port Huron, that will help decline their values even further. So, I think you have a very bad idea going. I think you need to address it in a little better manner. Putting a moratorium is not the answer. And I think, you know, possibly stepping up the types of inspections, or as I told you, Mr. Brown, a registration of foreclosures, and saying, "Before it can be done, we'd like you to bring them up to certain standards." But you are very precariously
Your time is up.
... dealing with the bundle of rights that people have in real estate value and their property. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Rachel Cole. This is my husband, Aaron Cole, and we are homeowners at 815 Union Street in Port Huron. That's the first point I'd like to make, is that we do live in the midst of this community. We're here this evening to support the moratorium on the residential rental unit certifications. We purchased our home in downtown Port Huron on purpose. We wanted to be a part of the revitalization of downtown Port Huron. I'm a native of the Blue Water area, and I want to invest in this community. We believe that this area has a lot to offer, and we want to be part of making our town all it can be. As we watch the decline of our own neighborhood and those around us, there's a common thread. When homes in our area are cited for blight, which we know how that works, and we're on top of it, but it's the rental properties that we have to call on. When we have to call police for noise, drugs, and domestic disputes, it's the rental properties that they're called to. Where are the problems in our neighborhood? They're at the rental properties that are held by landlords who don't live in our community and aren't invested in the city of Port Huron. We feel that poorly maintained, uncertified rental housing is a major contributing factor to the decline of our neighborhood. The houses and the properties themselves detract from the beauty of our areas and cause our house values to drop. We're tired of looking at the broken and boarded-up windows, peeling paint, and dilapidated front porches. And this is just what you can see from the sidewalk. On the inside, there's tenants without heat, water, and we've even heard of some that have no sewer. Nobody should be living in these conditions. How can this be happening? We believe that it's simply become a problem of such magnitude that it's going to take a drastic measure to control this problem. And that's why we think that the moratorium on new residential rental certification would be a good way to start. It would give our city inspectors the time to make sure that properties are in compliance with our city's standards, and begin to address the problem of the rental units that are not registered in our city's code. We'd like to see the city take action against the landlords who aren't invested in our community, and hold them accountable for the way they treat their properties and their tenants. We want to see the worst of these buildings demolished, so that they can no longer be used as subpar rental properties. We want to see the city's inspectors given the opportunity to enforce and maintain the high standards that our city has for rental properties, so that our communities are filled with homeowners and renters who care about their neighborhoods and have a vested interest in our community. None of this will be possible unless those of us invested in the city of Port Huron stand together in defense of our neighborhoods. Our city manager, Bruce Brown, is leading the way with this proposed ordinance. We want to urge city residents and city council to support this moratorium on new residential rental certifications, so that the city inspectors have the time they need to address the current rental situation and make changes on behalf of our community. We believe that Bruce Brown and the city council understand the rental housing properties in our neighborhood, and have the knowledge and expertise it takes to address these problems. We will support Bruce Brown and the city council as they tackle the issue of rental housing in our community, and we urge other city residents to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, and Mr. Brown. Dang, I hate having to follow that act. When I read the ordinance this morning, my first thought was, "I'm going to call everybody I know, every property owner, and get them all to register their property as rental property. At least, that way, we'd be 100% rental, have 100% of our residential real estate in the rental program. We'd inspect it, and then people would be preserving their property rights going forward." After talking with John Cooper and Hillary Bridge, who serve on the Quality of Life Commission, I think I moderated that some. I'm not, I'm very concerned about the ordinance. I don't like it. I think it will do everything that the people from the Realtor community have spoken of. The last woman who spoke, I also, I agree, we do need to do something, and I understand the feeling that you have, that you feel that you need to do something. My biggest concern, and I guess what I would ask, is that you, if you go forward, let's not do a year. I think if you can't understand the problem and come up with a solution in three months, you're probably not going to do it in a year. And if it does go a year, I'm very, very concerned about property values declining as people, rather than hold on to a property and rent it for a period of time, they feel that they have to cut it, and, you know, reduce the price even lower, sell it faster. Then what happens at Board of Review in March, when you have a number of people that have done that, and have a valid case to get their property assessment reduced even further than it already has been? Which then only creates more budgetary issues for you downstream. We all have, we need a safe community, we need a vibrant community, no question about that. I just think we need to go, put the brakes on here, not let it go for a year. That's way too long. It's no disrespect to staff, but if we, if staff can't get it done in three months, I just, it's probably not, I doubt that it's going to get done. Other ordinances that we've put into place that made me feel this way, the retail overlay district in downtown Port Huron, restricting property owners' use, the property uses downtown, that has not worked. The increase in the minimum lot size to 70 feet, I don't believe that has worked. Yet they stay on the books. So, with that history in mind, makes me even, is what makes me most nervous about going forward with the moratorium. Again, all I'd ask is that we shorten it from a year to three months. If you need to extend it after three months, you feel like you're making progress, you'd be more than able to do so. 820 Edison Boulevard, Sue, if you. Thank you.
Anthony America, Port Huron. Mr. Brown, you're right on the mark with that moratorium. Sometimes during the day, the city of Port Huron looks like the old mental grounds of the Pontiac State Mental Hospital. You're right on the mark. Keep at it, fella. Something is wrong right here in River City. All the beautiful ducks, geese are missing from Addison Parkway. What was done to them? Where are they? It was exciting to see all the kids chasing them in the waterfall, but they're gone. What happened to them? Somebody knows what the government and those agutistical doctors Somebody knows what the government and those egotistical Dr. Frankenstein's did with the development perfection of the AIDS and HIV virus. It came back to bite them in the behind. They thought just a few blacks and a few gay people, but folks, what goes around comes around. What was done to the seagulls? What was done to them? And the waterfowl will surely come back to bite those responsible in the behind. Goose poop and feathers are part of life. Get used to other creatures in this world. Shame. Shame.
Many people ask me why I serve. That's why I'm right there. Otherwise, I'd never watch this.
I'll follow that again.
Go ahead.
Hello, council. Uh, my name is, uh, Mark Reno. I'm a local real estate broker and, uh, real estate agent. And, uh, my concern today is with the moratorium. And, uh, again, like a lot of associates here, uh, my concern is with property owner rights. And I definitely appreciate the spirit, again, behind the moratorium. The deepest concern that I have is what's gonna happen with these properties when investors are taken out of the pool of buyers. Uh, the vast majority of these properties that we're referencing are selling below forty thousand. You can't get an FHA loan below forty thousand. There are no lending programs for folks to buy these properties. That leaves only one purchaser, that's a cash investor. So if there's no cash investor, I don't know who's gonna buy the property. I guess my concern is we need a positive, comprehensive plan, not just a punitive plan, uh, against the investors in our community. Um, and, and it was very timely today, this was the topic of discussion in our office. And, uh, we received in the mail, uh, from the city of Port Huron, a home tour of homes that the city has renovated. There are ten empty renovated homes available from the city, and many of these homes have been empty for years. The city has not been able to market and sell them to occupants. So what's gonna happen in the coming year? Are we gonna have another hundred homes just sitting there empty, kinda like what we have around the Bridge Plaza project right now? I mean, i- if they're gonna proceed with a moratorium, there needs to be a program in place to provide, provide financing for owner-occupant purchasers. And the ci- it's gotta be something major. The city may even have to insure loans for local banks, so that they can lend to these homeowners, because the creditworthiness is not there, the down payment's not there, there's no funds for renovating these properties. So if it's coupled with a plan to place owner occupants in these homes, you know, that would be more effective, but I haven't, we haven't heard anything that there's a plan to place owner occupants in these homes. It just sounds like we're gonna have empty houses, so I'm not sure how that's gonna work. That's a, that's a big concern, concern that we have. The other concern that I have is what kinda message are we sending to tenants that are great, long-term residents of this community? I mean, fifty percent of the voting base here is, are tenants, um, have been in their homes for a long time. I mean, basically, it sounds like you're, we're, we're calling tenants second-hand citizens. And, um, you know, there, there are a lot of tenants that, and homeowners, that don't take care of their properties, but there are a lot of really great folks that maintain their properties and contribute to this community. They pay their income taxes, you know, they pay their, they contribute to the property taxes. So those are just some concerns that I wanted to express and hope the council would, would take into consideration. And if nothing else, maybe just table this issue while a comprehensive plan can be developed to increase owner occupants' status, uh, instead of the punitive action that looks like it's on the table. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bruce Francic, Eighth Street, Port Huron, Michigan. I'm a little nervous, I may ramble, I apologize in advance. Um, the first thing I'd like to say is I'm not from Kimball Township, I'm not from Fort Gresham, I'm not from St. Clair, I'm not from Clyde Township. I live in the city of Port Huron. I live on Eighth Street. Um, there are a lot of rental units around my home. Many of the people have been there for years, great people. I count with my friends. Um, other places, people come and go more. It's more transient, it's a more mobile community, they don't set down roots. And the word we hear a lot, heard of last night here is "community." And I don't think an influx of people who are not going to put down roots in this community, be invested in the community, is good for the city of Port Huron. Um, many, many landlords, I'm certain, great people, maintain their properties very well. I support the moratorium, because I think the city needs to get a handle on those landlords who not maintain their homes. I've seen it in my neighborhood with my own eyes. I'm the first person, well, I won't say I'm the first person, I misspoke myself. No one here has stood up and said, "I'm a homeowner, homeowner in the city of Port Huron, and I want more rentals in my neighborhood." I'm a homeowner in the city of Port Huron, and I want people to keep a better eye-
[applause]
-on the, on the rental properties in the city. I think it's good for community, I think that's what we need. I think the business owners should be behind this. I don't know that a lot of the people we see come and go from our neighborhood are necessarily, necessarily supporting, um, Rock and the Rivers, um, the downtown businesses, maybe some, but I just think that it, I think it's necessary. I think the problem is, I'm on the verge of getting out of hand if it hasn't already. The tipping point we mentioned of thirty percent, that's, that's supported. I read studies that say that as well, and we're far beyond that at this point. I see no problem with giving the city council the power to hold on to things, get the matter in hand, and do the best they can with it. Um, I have no, I'm, like I said, I'm not a Realtor, not a landlord, never been one. I have no monetary gain from this. I'm just speaking as a member of the community. Once again, community who wants to stay here. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council. Um, this is Brown. Um, name's Tim Schneider, uh, foreign race here, went to Garfield Elementary, uh, Hollywood's Intermediate, Port Huron Northern, graduated from Northern. Currently in the military, I do not live in Port Huron, I'm currently residing in Jacksonville, North Carolina. But I do own a house, it's duplex here. Uh, four years ago, my wife and I decided this is possible, we may be coming back here or not. And we did invest in here. So our money, we, uh, raised, we saved, we decided to put money in here. Um, and so this, the thought that those who invest don't have a, you know, a deal with the community, I do invest in this community. Um, up till today, we're talking about getting another one, because we enjoy being part of this community, think about coming back after hearing what we read in the paper today. I don't think so. I'm not even here, I'm on vacation today. Read that in the news, uh, the paper today, said, "What the heck's going on? I'm coming in." Because this now makes me concerned, if I get rid of my duplex, person buys it, you know, they're gonna live on both sides, and I've been able, will they be able to get a rental certification on that? Um, when my, uh, rental certification goes up, someone else sells it, they gonna be able to get it again? I don't know. I don't believe that all people who invest in the computer, community, excuse me, that are homeowners, or, excuse me, property managers, I wanna call it, um, don't have investment in the community, 'cause that's wrong. It is. I mean, I take care of our property, I make sure the people cut the grass. I had one of my tenants can't get out and shovel his gra- his, uh, the snow when it, uh, comes out, so I actually pay out of my pocket, even though I'm down in North Carolina, to make sure he's taken care of. So to say that, uh, all the, uh, property owners aren't, uh, in for the community is wrong. So, uh, if you're gonna do your study as well on the, uh, property of people who rent or are, uh, have their property, I'd also suggest you do it on the rest of the city as well, because we'll just find out what the, for those who are rental properties, those are homes. 'Cause I know here, and as other places as well, there's a lot of people who are homeowners don't take care of their property as well. So just not the, uh, rental properties. So, thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Craig Matthews, I'm a Port Huron resident. Mayor, council members, city manager. I am here to support the moratorium and our city manager. Uh, yes, we can attitude, I appreciate that, whether it's the moratorium, the aquarium, or other things that come into this town. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I was sitting at home, and I thought it was time to hear from a south-side homeowner, and that's what I am. And it's not that, that we're saying you can't have rental units in the city, we have a ton of rental units in the city. We have enough rental units in the city. We need to put a stop, put a pause, and turn this into a positive thing. You know, find reasons why people then will move back into the city. Um, we have a lot of assets here. Now, I heard a lot of people talk about the lower property values and, and that type of thing. But what's causing that? The high number of rentals that we have? Um, thank you.
Thank you.
[applause]